Do I have a motion to break the day?
Second.
I have a motion filed by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Bowley. Will call. Will call.
Yes, sir. President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson? Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson? Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw? Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Back to the business items. Business item number one, 2020 census. I'm gonna ask the councilman if we would consider setting aside some money for some advertisement. Talking about the importance of the census, because it's gonna be very important that we give as many head counts as possible in this upcoming census, because it's sixteen hundred dollars, but every individual feels after census. And it's a minus sixteen hundred dollars from the law. So you cannot fill it out. And I feel like it's imperative now that we try to maximize giving as many services to fill it out and many other avenues that we could take on, because under the last census count was twenty thousand seven hundred fifty cents. But I'm quite sure it's gonna be less than that with the upcoming census, and we're gonna need every dollar that we can get. Councilwoman.
Can we just public service announce?
Public service announce or whatever we need to do to get the advertisement out. Next we have Councilman, Councilman, uh, Councilman Bowley. Business item number two, red light cameras, AC and lockbox. Yeah, please, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have, we do service with Bear Mobility Banking regarding the lockbox for the red light traffic funds, the funds that we receive. In the past, we have, we have utilized US Bank as our current lockbox provider. However, they have notified Bear Mobility that as of December 31st, they will no longer support existing lockboxes. So what that means for us, the city of San Antonio, is that we either need to make a decision that we wanna open up our own bank account and manage the funds ourselves, individual, or either continue with a new lockbox that's established through Bear Mobility. And I have sent the information over to our attorney. My recommendation is what we call the tier three. And in that tier three is the continuation of the way it's already previously been established, just a new lockbox provider. And what it allows us to do, just the same as we're currently doing, is allowing Bear Mobility to open a lockbox on our behalf. And then it'll put the services will continue through December 31st. We can open an additional account. The problem is the reconciliation, because you get hundreds, possibly thousands of payments that come through. And so we would have to reconcile every payment that comes through the lockbox. And for Department outside of Small Desk Bear Town, and it can kind of be confused, confusing, because we would have to do our own reconciliation. With Bear Mobility, they perform those services for us through the lockbox that we establish on behalf of, through US Bank on behalf of us. So my recommendation is to continue with tier three. The email that I could present before you is an email where I have sent, sent five documents from our city attorney. There was a couple of things that the attorney wanted us to be aware of. And that was one, that the OK agreement, which is the lock, the new lockbox, lockbox provider, is governed by Florida state laws, and that limits the venue for litigation to Cali County, Florida. So should we have any litigation, we would have to file in the Florida court. The second thing also is that in order to, in order to, the Vantee LLC agreement is governed by the Ohio law. And it, the waiver that we have agrees to waive any claims against Vantee or its member bank for any breach of agreement unless the city gives written notice within thirty days of breach. It doesn't say we can't, we would just have to give a thirty day notice. And because the city is not involved in the collection process, we will be relied on the vendor for these services. So in terms of the customer data requirement, it was concerned about breach. Well, because it's not going through us, we won't have that issue or concern. Just something that to look over, our attorney has looked over the agreement. We have to act in on that time. December 31st is the deadline for Bear Mobility. But of course, we wanna try to keep that in, we wanna try to vote and move forward before that time and give them a lot of Bear Mobility opportunity. And again, my recommendation is the three-tier document. The, our attorney had prepared a resolution that, that council can approve, allowing us to move forward. Three, tier three does not cause for any changes other than allow Bear Mobility to change lockbox companies, because the US Bank is no longer allowing that to carry any lockboxes. So I've given you this email, took time to go over it. I've sent the, approved the attorney for the agreement. So if you could allow the mayor to enter this agreement so we can move forward. And if you have any questions or concerns, I think it'd be a good idea to have Woody or Grandma, our city attorneys available to have that discussion in detail. But they have outlined what they thought the council should be aware of in making this decision.
Okay, do we have a resolution?
Yes, I have copied the resolution and I'll forward to you. But I can, I have a copy now that I can give to you.
Council members, do you feel comfortable that we can move forward with this on having the next council meeting? Give enough opportunity to approve the resolution and also bring in Attorney Jones at the next word.
You said, next one, not, not you, yes.
Okay, we're moving forward with it. Thank you, Ms. President. Next one item, Personnel Manual. I probably would be getting together and add my committee to do that Personnel Manual and make some amendments, add some corrections. But I would definitely assign a, I think I committed to move forward with that and maybe Miss Barry Jones or somebody like that, a past HR person, to also assist us in this endeavor. All right. Next, Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes, Mr. President. Our law procedure for the consent agenda is to discuss items during our voice session. The money brought to the council room is accepted temporarily exempt. You added an item to be specifically needed here for Randolph's basement itself and another council room that is not identifying Bobby Seeger's bill. That is not named on the consent agenda. The legal bill that you placed on the consent agenda without the proper vendor was tabled by the overall council, but yet that bill was paid nevertheless. Mr. President, I want to know why this bill being mailed to your address and not to the city hall? Did you, Mr. President, sign off on paying the bill despite the fact that the concession of the council was to table it for this further discussion? And did you authorize the chair of trade to pay the bill, pay the bill, per the decisions of council members? If you recall, Mr. President, I took the exception of legal representation for any council member who's going into a criminal investigation by the law, authority of the FBI and Attorney General. To my understanding, there were numerous of council people that were certain to talk to the FBI agent and Murry, I think that's his name, and Jasper Roberts, the Attorney General's investigator. And of course, I know I didn't feel the need to take a lawyer. Of course, if I did, I would have secured that lawyer on my own. I think this amount that the city has paid for legal representation for itself, Benjamin and Councilman Randolph, this amount must be reimbursed to the city because my humble opinion, this is a illegal transaction. And low certainly, the council has not approved this bill to be paid.
Thank you, Councilwoman LaShaw. I was waiting for this, this show. I remember the old song that used to say, "Don't ask my neighbor, come to me." And I just wish that we could have put this to the side, but since you don't open the door, you jump in now. First of all, I do agree with you. If you can recall, if you look at the minutes, I did say take it off. I did agree with you, but inadvertently, it was signed. And I take full responsibility for it. Take full responsibility for that. But if you can recall, at the prior council meeting, this bill was under nine hundred nine dollars. Now, and the council approved that on the consent agenda. Then the next invoice that came through, they was all put together. But see, I knew this was gonna be a Shakespeare play. I always expect what to expect. I knew all the players, who's my highness? So what I did was, I asked the legal municipal. Also, I counselled the ethics committee. And I got a letter from Bobby Seeger to confirm that everything is okay. And I'm gonna read into the minutes. I have never tried to underhand anything, and the process always wins. I approved it, I always approved the invoice. But I knew this is gonna be a honky-doory thing. So I always do my homework, and let me read what Attorney Bobby Seeger said. He said, "Corey, based on my research, I have done, it is my opinion that is effective by the city for the city council lawyer to represent them in connection with the interview was purged. The question under the ethics act," let me read that again. "The question under the ethics act is whether the public official will use their office for personal gain, because the city council members were not defendants in their individual capacity or in any way subject of the investigation. But rather were only witnesses because of their official position, the city council lawyer could, could represent them in connection with the interviews and be paid for the representation by the city without them in any foundation of the ethics act. If the facts were different and the city council members were either defendants of the subject of the investigation, or if they are otherwise using their position for personal gain, the analysis would likely be different. Corey, I have looked at my law firm's bill related to the interview act, and the legal bill spent on that was eight point eight hours, two hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents. I will leave it up to the three council members separately, but I am willing to reimburse that money and the three council members, if they choose, can instead make payments in the amount they can afford. As indicated above my opinion, is that the payments were made consistently with the ethics act. That however, will not stop people from criticizing the council members. So I'm willing to do whatever the three council members would like. But Councilwoman LaShaw, I got to, I got to thank you. You came forward, I, I realize that. For the ones who's behind the scenes, I want to, I work. And I really appreciate you for doing that.
Can I respond?
Yes, sir.
I understand what Attorney Bobby Seeger is bidding. Naturally, he would have, and my basic bias is basically because he's the one submitted the bill. I wouldn't expect this council, Mr. President, to utilize the council president, Mr. Woodrow Jones, for him getting legal standing for this, rather than here for my attorney's secret. I, I mean, I understand Bobby Seeger's position. I have a position, I think it's a position that should be identified before this meeting. And I think we need to, we can, our attorney, Woodrow Jones, to give us a legal opinion about this so we can put this amount in the register.
Okay. Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman.
Mr. President, thank you for consulting with the league. And if Mr. Seeger was here, I would thank him for consulting concerning the ethics of the matter. You know, we sit and we talk about, let's not target people, and let's not vote after people. This is what's happening here. This is all this, this is about here, it is for people. None of the other bills, you know, people up here say, "I don't, I don't vote for nothing concerning Bobby Seeger, but you sure do use his services, you sure do utilize his services, you sure do attend every meeting, you sure do ask him questions, you sure do ask questions concerning things you are personally connected to, people you are personally connected with." This is about people, that is what this is about, Mr. President. So I want to thank you for consulting the league of municipalities and to Bobby for consulting the ethics commissions in that regard. So thank you very much.
And also too, if you can recall, when we were standing up there, there was a bill with Dr. Geraldine Allen with the Water Board.
I remember.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, that Councilwoman.
I'm just, I'm just trying to him, talk to him. Don't talk to him.
Yes, I said, everybody, if they were sitting, you know, attorney.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Councilwoman Thomas, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yes, I said, every meeting, and nothing's gonna deter me from that. I didn't vote for Attorney Bobby Seeger, for one, I thought he was too expensive. Two, I thought he was being balled to fight individual council members legally, when we have a legal attorney. And yes, I'm gonna always sit there, and I'm not gonna deter, I'm not gonna stop, because when it comes to this bill, I'm always gonna vote no. But I take the subject for any council person looking for this taxpayer's dime to pay for their legal representation and criminal investigation. Once a year, just because you got a responsible attorney's secret, yes, he's biased because he was submitted a bill. I can tell you, we need to get our attorney, which is Woodrow Jones of a gambling gambling law firm who represents the city. Let him give us a legal opinion, as well as not this is a bill, be a legal opinion.
Okay, I will, but all the time when we ask attorneys on, it's conflict, because they represent the mayor and others in the council. So what's gonna be different about this?
Can I go right quick?
Go ahead. So here, and there you have it. We just heard that this person next to me had, didn't, Councilwoman LaShaw, correct.
Not this person.
Councilwoman LaShaw. Has stated that he didn't vote for the man because he felt like he was gonna be representing people personally. So it's about people, it's about who he feels this man has been hired to represent. Out of his own mouth, he has said.
I said.
He, he has said, so we know the reason, we know the reason.
So I would, your own attorney, I would investigate.
You get me to, for your cause.
Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Thomas. Okay. The question that I have to say is that also we need to realize too, Councilwoman LaShaw said we need to use our, our own attorney. But our own attorney feels like, you know, a lot of stuff is conflict interest with the mayor. And I talked to him, I always use him. He recommend that we, and I'm quite sure President Bowie knows this, that he's recommend that we be looking for us another attorney, in-house attorney for this city council. So that is a reason why a lot of things that our attorney don't want to get involved with some of the conflicts that we have here. He told me today that he recommend that we be looking for us an in-house attorney.
What I meant, I would get with Attorney Jones, and let him be the judge of the jury. Councilwoman.
I just want to say for the record, when we initially hired Bobby Seeger, it was not for individual council members. It was for an issue between the mayor and the council that we needed legal representation because our in-house counsel, which was not Attorney Jones at that time, could not provide us with what we initially served with the information papers documentation that we needed to. And so we were advised that we need our own attorney. So I just wanted to set the record straight.
January the 3rd, January the 3rd, 2002.
We contracted with him for that, for those matters and any others that would bring or appear to be a conflict.
Okay, all right, we'll move forward. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to go on and say, clarify, because people around here have a habit of, well, I say people around here, but I'm just gonna say, it has happened that certain people have selectively recorded things only to extort people later on. So anyway, well, I won't even go into that. But anyway, I just want to get it out there that Bobby, he called me one time and asked me about what I thought about, about the representation of council members at going to that. And I did tell him, I did not think that it might be appropriate for him to represent council members, because I didn't know exactly what they were looking at, what they were talking about at that time and all that stuff. But I also want to say, and I've told council members this too, thank you, Mr. President, that if Bobby Seeger, he has represented governors, senators, and I think he could represent my president now. And he is not going to put his reputation and his law license and his business on the line for the council, although wonderful as any of us may be. So I think especially, and I, it wouldn't be a bad idea to get Woody to say what Woody thinks, I don't think that'd be a bad idea at all. However, I just don't think Woody trumps the ethics commission. I think when it's all said and done, I think that he would probably say what is the ethics commission saying. Because we're all subject to what they say.
Neither way though.
But anyhow, I, I think it's not gonna be, I don't think that'd be a problem at all.
It's cool with me.
Put that out there.
All right, Councilwoman LaShaw, then you go on. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Well, you know, once again, my position, and I stand by my.
That's mine.
This is a bill that should not be barred by the taxpayers' dime. And of course, I'm asking the power attorney, who was on the city's budget, that look at this matter and bring us a legal opinion, maybe from the Attorney General rather than the ethics commission. And whatever the city has made, then I'll be satisfied. If it indeed the fact that this is a bill that should not be incurred by the taxpayers, then I would put a motion that the money be paid by the respective council. And in between, if my colleagues over there made a mention about a cousin I had needing a legal representation, I need for you to explain to me, what are you talking about? I'm talking about Benjamin, Councilwoman Benjamin. Tell me what you're talking about.
I want to, listen, put it out there.
Move on, Mr. President.
No, no.
She accused my cousin, whoever that cousin is.
Yeah, I'm telling my cousin down there.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on.
Yes, let's continue to move on, my, my.
Either way, it's fine with me.
And I'm glad we're talking about the legal building.
I forgot, I forgot.
Oh, okay, come on, let's get to some illegal building.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the work session? I mean, the special call me, what's up with this here about legal matters? And I may not be here tomorrow due to the special committee. So I just want to go ahead and.
Mr., I, I do have one more thing. And I apologize, I didn't get this on the first. And some of us, other people may have gotten called, but I got called from Miss Sunshine Everado, because she wants to do a Halloween function down on Butterfly Park.
Fall festival.
A fall festival, I'm sorry, down on the, could we, could we give her two minutes?
Let me call this out.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were just.
No, 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 no. You need a call?
That's what you're saying. No, we don't need a vote, I was just gonna pass her a discretion.
Just pass it out, that's all right. All right, I'll go ahead and adjourn for the special call meeting.
Councilman Bowie? Councilman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, before we get to that, this way I will be authorizing a letter this week or sometime, or next week. Go ahead and take the lady off the floor. I'll be, I'll be, I'll be right there.
I, I do.
All right, go ahead, Council, I mean, Council.
I want to say thank you for the last time I come to be, you guys helped me with Easter egg hunt and it was really enjoyed it. Thank you, everybody, participating, thank you. And this time, you know, going through a little tragedy, I got tired of just dealing with my own problems. So I realized the kids, I had school these next two days, Thursday and Friday this week for fall break, which is new for the city's school system. So I called Councilwoman Jackson and asked her if she co-sponsored this event with me, being in the four or three resident. Initially, we tried to do the Smithman building, but logistics got kind of throwed around. So we're gonna be at the Butterfly Park, and it's gonna be open to all schoolchildren. And we're just doing crafts and lunch and stuff like that, fun things. So it's not gonna be like the Easter egg, where we're gonna keep buying like baskets, and that got kind of costly. So we're doing like arts and crafts, and we're asking the council to donate so we can buy glue. Mr. Bowlen suggested that we get some porta potties, so I'm asking him to at least cover one of them. Councilman Johnson is helping me cut the grass in the bushes. Well, the grass is kind of cut low, but the bushes around Butterfly Park is kind of high and snakes in the river. So folks, we're gonna do that. Mr. Brown came by and helped me do that, and the local businesses and stuff. So I'm asking people to donate crafts, if you got any, like glue, scissors. A businessman just gave me twenty dollars to buy some scissors, they had them in sale, it was saleable for fifty cents. So things like that, it's not gonna be costly, because most of the stuff the kids wanna do on hand. I asked Carl Michaels, Captain Carl Michaels, to donate some pumpkins, hopefully that works out, I'm not sure. I'm just asking community members, if you got some things or you wanna do a craft booth, you can come on down and just set up and do stuff with the kids. Because really, just about give the kids something to do with those two long days off. So, thank you, Ms. Everado.
Thank you much.
Councilmen.
Thank you, Ms. Everado, for putting this together. I saw your, someone shared their Facebook post, and it also alerted me that we actually have a fall break.
We didn't know that.
And the kids will be roaming around, and it just alerted me. So you, you have an art person also out in the audience, Miss Kennedy is out in the audience. So make sure you have no private conversation with her. But thank you all for putting it together. Councilwoman Jackson, I don't know who else is involved, but everyone who's involved, thank you all for giving the young people something to do on this upcoming fall break that nobody else found.
I appreciate it. It's from ten to four, so it's during the school hours, a little bit after, to give the parents time to get together.
Councilwoman Jackson, then Councilwoman LaShaw.
First, I want to thank Ms. Everado, this was all her, thank you for allowing me to participate at all. I would not be there this week, I, just a scheduling conflict, and I had already scheduled to be at a training and I made a wear, but I would not forget to leave my donation. And if, you take my money for the pleasure, a porta potty for everyone.
Okay, thank you.
I want to consistently thank you for looking out for our children. I know there have been times where we had Easter hunts in Rancho Park that you put on, and it was, it was a blast. And it was, and I hope that you're looking for this upcoming, you should do the same back.
I hope so, well, they did one, another one this Easter, so I don't mind.
Thank you.
It's gonna make the war six.
Thank you, Ms. sunshine. Councilwoman Benjamin, continue with your business part.
Okay, speaking of legal authorities, I'm gonna segue into some of my items. I want to talk to, for me? Is there a moment?
No, there isn't. After the special call meeting, I wanted to point of order, President, if I may speak.
Go ahead.
Before you off the seat, with the rest of the agenda items.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to state that last, just to bring clarity. I just wanted to state that last Wednesday, just to bring clarity to the situation on last Wednesday. I think that was October the second, as well as last Thursday, October third. I was away from my office on the third after the appointment that I had that afternoon. On Thursday the third, I took a couple hours off for the event that I attended. So I just wanted to bring some clarity to that.
That makes sense.
This was something personal. I wouldn't have come in on Wednesday morning, but I had a matter to deal with that had come up personally in form of an emergency that I had to deal with, otherwise I would have been here Wednesday morning.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
That's what I'm saying. You just need to listen to the voice and just see before you jump to judgment. Thank you, all.
Before we get into stuff, we're not talking time. Let's, thank you, let's go to, okay, go to my item there, before we get into the next session stuff. Okay, building for the memorial stadium and number seven may go together, I'm not sure. I talked to Madam Treasurer, well, last week, I think it was last week, we had the mayor put a representative up to speak in regards to the memorial stadium, and that representative that the mayor chose was Sean Maniavera. And Sean Maniavera told us that the last two or three years, I don't want to say he said it too, that there has been no charge concerning the memorial, concerning the memorial stadium, and it has been waived, all of the schools, like, all of the schools, that were there. He made that report. So I talked with Madam Treasurer, and I told her, you know, there are some things I'd like to see, the building for the memorial stadium, also asked her concerning city equipment. He also reported that one person that was helping out to, I guess his person was lining or cutting, but there was an authorization given to a non-city employee to use city equipment, and I don't know where that authorization would have come from as well. You know, I remember us talking about, I don't know if it was Councilwoman Rambler or somebody who wanted to borrow, or did we overturn and cut some grass, and we said, no, 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 there's a liability, liability to that. And I wanted to know who was connected to that because those people need to, they need to pay for wearing tariff their equipment, and they also need to pay for the building that was unauthorized concerning all of these schools for two or three years. They need to be paid for by whoever authorized it. It's just legal. So Madam Treasurer, I don't know if you had a chance, because I know y'all are down there handwriting checks because of the so-called hack system. I know y'all are doing those things, and now you have something else on your plate. You have to handwrite the, yay, you have to handwrite the vacation check for the laid off employees. Happy, happy, happy to hear that. So I don't know if you had a chance to pull all those things. I also asked her to pull a list of all the contractors paid through the recent grass cutting funds, all of those contractors who were paid through that, everyone, every entity, every body, every organization, every contractor that was paid for, through those funds that we voted on. So I don't know if you had time since we talked to pull any of those things or not?
I have, I would some of the information that you requested, Councilwoman Benjamin, that I will have the full report for you tomorrow.
Okay.
So if you get any questions or concerns, I can ask you on tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate that. City inventory is my last, is my last item. You know, we've been talking about cameras, and where are the cameras, where are the laptops? And we recently, the majority of this council recently voted to get some air laptop, Macbook, or whatever it is that I believe was already here. I don't know if you have an invoice for that, I think it was possibly already purchased before the vote. I don't know, but if you can let me know.
I can request a copy of the actual invoice, but it has not been presented.
Okay, would you let me know the date that's on that, please? I just would like to get into the person that's gonna be keeping up with the city inventory. Madam Clark, the last time we met, you said that this person, September thirtieth, that was the last day. That was the last day to give you some kind of information concerning the inventory, Clark?
The RFP for the inventory.
The RFP, uh-huh, so that was the last day. Is there any update concerning that?
Yes, ma'am, the RFP went out and it closed on that day, September thirtieth. And I spoke with Mr. Bowie, as well as with the Graham about the fact that he don't have the one responsible there. And they're in the process of preparing a resolution to bring before the council. I don't know if President Bowie has received that, President Bowie, did you hear that?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll speak with him again, I spoke with Mr. Graham this afternoon. And it should be coming to you tomorrow, Mr. President, so that we can perhaps get it on the consent agenda for.
So it should be coming to him on tomorrow?
I'm hoping that it will be in the form of, you know, for a vote by council.
Okay, good, because with it being alleged that people are using our equipment that are non-employees and all these things, after the fact, I just would like to know about this inventory of ours.
And it's gonna come in the form of the resolution number for this past fifth year so that it can come out of this present fiscal year, as opposed to.
Current fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have a question. After we get that resolution, how soon will the person getting the contract get started?
Now, I don't know, we will have to follow up.
Could you pose that question to the contractor because it's important for us to know how soon they get this started?
The contractor is waiting on the city, they've been waiting on us for about a year now. So.
Once they pass the resolution, it should kick in.
They're ready to move forward.
We can actually send them a contract resolution to service the contract also, you know, for then we go ahead.
Okay, well, once we send them a contract, if they contact them, if they give us a definite date, it's when they're being able to get started.
Yeah, but I think if the resolution comes tomorrow, if it passes, we can just go ahead and scan the metadata.
And they actually, they probably have a contract in place, we could just let Woody look over it and follow up.
Of course, many councilors supporting it initially, it is, it's, I mean, it's gonna be a challenge for the city to know what we got, our access is unknown, and you might find, sometimes you disappear, sometimes you don't. But at least every year, we'll know whether it has disappeared. And if it's disappeared, then those who are responsible need to give us an account for that.
Sounds like a clown, clown.
This way, we talked on Friday, and I asked you to give me the bill that the state, that I think you had to get.
For the.
You mentioned to me that somehow it was a bill from last year, and I asked you to, can you give me a copy that I can be prepared?
I don't have the bill, I don't want to share the bill, I think that comes from recreation. I can, it's the same as what Councilwoman Benjamin is requesting, and that's what has, what has revenue that we receive from the high school, and I have that copy along with that for tomorrow.
You know, I asked her that before.
Right, oh, I guess.
Okay, because I mentioned that.
The intent is for all the councils to have.
Yes, I know, I just want to make sure that I'm all of the.
But we don't do the building that should have been done in recreation, and I just, I'm able to review and keep track of the revenue through the software system.
When I asked her about last year's bill, and she said she thought that the school had paid it out, you know, so, but I need to see what we're looking at on that, because I went to her and asked about somehow paying the fees for the stadium last year. With you.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
So if they did pay that out, find out who they paid to, because if you don't have it, if you don't have that money, somebody has it.
She said she.
Yes, find out who she paid it to.
All right, anything else, Councilwoman?
No, sir. I think that was my last item.
Councilwoman Jackson?
If you recall, Asma's came for us a couple of months ago in reference to doing a contract for professional services to provide grant writing. And I've spoken back to her, and she actually contacted me prior to passing another budget, because I told her that was something that we considered. I'm asking that we look into that because there, if anybody knows anything, especially about federal grants or grant writing, it's the first, it's the first quarter of fiscal year, so they're just putting out the proposals, and they're asking for, right, they're asking for them to be turned in, your application to be turned in by December thirty first, Sunday, first of January. So I'm asking that the council would consider hiring this group. And she has sent me the list of the grants that they would start off. She said that she wanted to bring in additional revenues early, that the federal or state grant is like a year turnaround to put in this year, you'll start for the next year, which you have to get in your application. But there are private grants available through private organizations, and she's looking to write for infrastructure, ground fees, parks, and safety. And so she's ready to get started. I'm asking that the council would consider putting that on the consent agenda and looking at it out of the planning and development line item. We know that they had, and I was supposed to look, it's up sixty-five thousand dollars for, is my budget? You need a minute? Yeah, last year's budget, I have it on my desk, I guess. But sixty-five thousand dollars on last year in their budget, they're asking for additional funding this year, but I'm asking that we consider the sixty-five thousand dollars. Actually, I look at this budget.
You got some more?
No, I look at the budget for performance for. And so I'm asking that we consider that, putting that on the consent agenda and vote it up or down tomorrow. Because if we don't make a decision on this item, we're gonna miss several opportunities this year to put in for federal grants. They, she may be aware that they were awarded last week a four hundred and fifty thousand public safety grant.
Okay, Councilwoman.
My next item, did you have your handle, Mrs. Councilwoman Bennett?
No.
Okay, my next item is council appointments and tax collection, discuss some of those matters. And so I will bring those up at this, at this time. First, too, Mr. President, have we heard anything?
I haven't been heard of it.
Okay, because. I have some interest, and if we can generate some funds, and I have a delay of a year to give more three, I would truly appreciate it.
I thought we could, we could, Councilwoman Bennett, this week.
I did. Hopefully by Friday. The last time I spoke with, I believe she told me around the September fifteenth, and so that's why I don't want, except for bringing anything to the council, but I've received a number of calls. And the first thing I guess we need to do before we accept anything is have an appraisal to determine what is worth, but we can't do anything unless we know it's returned to us, and all the documentation has been done. So we'll keep an abreast of that. Electronic timekeeping system. So with everything that's going on with the city, one thing I realize is that we're still doing time when I did it for General Services under Mr. Jim Solvin at eighteen years of age in nineteen ninety-seven. So I think we need, we're going to need an electronic timekeeping system. I think that's the best way, the most efficient way to ensure that there, there are not errors in our calculation of time and or the way that we pay our employees. I've been told that there may be a module in New World for timekeeping, and I would like the council to give me the authority to speak with our treasurer and so we can find that module and come back with the cost.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be transgressing?
It do have one. We have one.
Do we have one?
Under the Evans administration, there was a time, timekeeper system purchased, and I'm not sure why it's not inactive, is why it's inactive, but we've had time. Yeah.
This way, did the mayor implement that?
Sir?
Did the mayor implement that time?
Did the mayor?
Implement that time?
Evans did, yes.
Well, I think this is, this is a significant branch of responsibility here.
Well, if we.
I think this needs to be approached with the mayor about this, because he, I mean, this is, this is, this is transgressing, as far as I'm concerned, to this, this is a branch of government, because it is the charge.
Councilwoman, if I love the.
This is just to you, I know you still have a floor, this is just to you, you don't need our permission to talk to the treasurer.
What I wanted, what I wanted to see.
I think that's what you were asking, you were not asking anything else.
I wanted to call on behalf of the city itself to New World, get with them, and see if they have a system. If we've already purchased one, then it's why maybe it's not utilized, or maybe it's started to utilize, but I've spoken with several employees that are along the area, they said they didn't plot in. So maybe some are requiring, some are not.
No, everybody was requiring the Evans administration.
Right, under the Evans administration, I'm talking about this.
And I don't know what happened in, in that process, but it's not with New World, it's a separate, and I can't remember the name, but the IT director would be more familiar with the company. Go out whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'll get there, thank you guys, thank you. Councilwoman, because if, even if it's the mayor's, if it's something that we need to buy because it needs to be in sync with New World or need to, as people say, speak to, it's gonna have to come to the council, unless we're just gonna enroll in purchase or misappropriate its purchase.
No, no.
But so my next item is traffic lights, and I want to make you all aware that on last Tuesday, City of Gas gifted by a resolution, the council eighteen historic lights. I've spoken with Temple, I want to say Temple Electronics, but that doesn't sound right. But I've spoken with Mr. Greer out of Gas, and who restored their lights, and he's going to provide it with a quote for the restoration of those lights. He's also made me aware that they're able to, and they've also provided services to the city before of the different administrations, actually, he stated that they put all the downtown lights in, so maybe. But what he said to me is that they could put in a new box.
Oh, wow.
So we've purchased ten new boxes, so I specifically asked about that. And he said approximately thirty-eight hundred dollars a piece to put in those boxes, and they're doing all the electronic on it, so I know we were waiting for some of our employees that may or may not have the time or the expertise in the area to do that. Because of the public safety need to have these done, all the blinking lights, and we know, I know specifically in World Three, we've had a fatality that somewhat pedestrian was actually hit, and some say that it was because a car was flying down the street, they shouldn't have put the lights just blinking, and they just kept going through it. I know I'm very nervous when I go through the blinking lights because I'm not sure if they're going to stop or not. But I looked into this, so I'll continue talking, I have some, I've got two companies, so I get the bids on that to see what it would cost to restore those lights and determine how we can get those moved. And also, I would like to, for the council to consider that thirty-eight hundred dollars to get those boxes in, because Councilwoman Thomas has been talking about the boxes for the longest we purchased them under the last fiscal year.
Yep.
But we've not done anything to put them in public groups and set them down because we don't have the manpower necessary, so.
The state volunteered to come and help us. The state volunteered to come and help.
The state volunteered to come in, when, get them to come in?
Yeah, I'm just saying. Got to let them in. Yeah, that's, that's the challenge.
But we, we had the conversation, Councilwoman, with the representative who she suggested. This is, this is a different state coming in and volunteering to help us to teach our people so that they can, they can learn, there are people that are, may or may not be at work. And so if we have a contract with someone, then we assure that the work is done. We give them access to ten boxes, and then we give them a timeline and say, we're going to do it by this, and we can check. But either way, you all would like to do that, that's. Well, some of the benefits, I just want to make sure that I made you all aware that when I was asking about the restored lights, that I did ask about those items. My greatest need is the Asma, because if we can get, if their plan is to give some federal money through private grants, and if we can get some money in here for our parks and recreation, if we can get some additional funding in here, and they may actually hire employees through grants, you're allowed to do that, and so that may be some things that we can get done, additional public safety money.
But, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, we could also receive some admin costs too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you can get, you can write ten percent.
Check percent.
Yeah, add in costs to this, for the city. Oh, that may be how they, you know.
No, we can.
Yeah, or they can.
That's a lower revenue.
I hadn't yet been.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
I, I think with, and this is the young lady that made the presentation.
Yes, I think with the amount of money, um, that she's asking, even if she just wrote, if she wrote one, one single small grant, she. We would, we would, we'd have to cook what she's asking us to pay her for a year. And if we try her out for, for a year and there's nothing, then we can break this contract, right?
Yes, actually, we can break it at any time.
At any time, we can break this contract. So I, I, I think it is, it is worth it. And it, and that opinion of mine does not matter. What does matter is that it is needed.
Yes.
That's the thing. The grant writer comes aboard to, um, complement, uh, community that are planning and developing.
I agree.
Okay, now, uh, like you just said, Councilwoman Benjamin, but now, uh, is, we have, do we have to pay her sixty-five thousand at one time?
No, sir.
Okay, that's a good, good.
Twenty-four thousand six.
Sixty thousand for the entire year.
Good, I know what I'm asking.
Any, any contract, anytime you want.
Right, if we break it, that means we just pay her in payment. Okay, all right, okay, I'm with you.
She, she said that, yeah, that is correct, she would send us a, a, a time and, um, we, we can do it that way and we can get out of it at any time. And, um, so I think that's, that's our best option at this point to try to get some additional revenues in to take care of our city. And I, I thank you for staying with, um, Councilwoman. And for answering that question, I did ask, did we need to solicit another company? Did we need to set out bids? Did we need to do any of those things? And Lori at the league said, no, this is professional services. Um, and I told her, I said, the young lady that you had at the conference last year, Ms. Taylor, we're looking at. And she said, these, those are professional services. You don't have to do it if the council folks are in a contract and you're done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Thank you, guys.
Councilwoman Thomas, my lady, what's your?
I have, oh, okay. Um, um, I have some concerns with the public buildings. Um, one of them is we've been working on, we're back in another fiscal year. Um, the Dallas Academy Building, there will be a, uh, a public building meeting because we have, uh, Judge Armstrong will be coming before us. And I'd like for all of the council that are available could be there to this meeting. Uh, with his interest in, uh, getting the whole, renting the whole second floor. So he wants to address some issues with us. But one thing we have a problem with, we paid, we agreed for the money, we got the insurance money for the, for, put the air conditions in, the units, which have not been put in yet. And we also gave the other five thousand dollars toward, to finish the job. It hasn't been done yet, so we need to, uh, talk with the, uh, our department head, Ms. Sherri Davis, and the mayor, and find out, um, what's going on with that, to finishing up that, that building. Also, we have, um, we'll be discussing with, uh, about the grant, the AMP grant that, uh.
Black Belt Foundation.
Yeah, the Black Belt Foundation, they want us to, uh, we need to approve that tomorrow. We need to approve it, but then also, uh, he came before us with the five hundred dollars, there'll be ten events. But, uh, Bolan, are you a part of the Black Belt?
I am.
Okay, can you, uh, he offered five hundred, uh, five hundred dollars for each ten events. Uh, in, uh, amphitheater is fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, I would like to ask you, uh, could you, you, you and your director of Black Belt, can y'all come back with us, uh, for the council on another, add another price to?
Yeah, again, I think, uh, all they did was give permission to write the grant to see if they could even get the, the grant. So, I mean, until the grant's awarded, which we didn't get last year when they applied for it. But they did call when they saw that consent agenda and asked if they needed to be here today. I said, we got a long meeting. So I bet they just called Ms. Janey and talked to Ms. Janey.
They coming on, uh, the special call.
Right, because since this is a council thing.
Commitment.
Commitment.
Commitment, commitment.
Just being honest, happy to let them know, but I won't step aside, of course, since that's, I've spoken on stuff for them. I don't do much with these days, trust me, clear them all out.
And also, also I went to, uh, Ms. Sherri Smith, asked us to, uh, give us the okay with the building to put the pictures up, uh, the, the mirror pictures up. And I went and I saw the building, so I wanted the council, you know, so we can approve that too, for her to put the pictures up.
What, what is that?
Uh, the building is down, is downtown.
Eleventh and.
Yes, and she wants to put up all the, you know, those, those pictures up on the building.
For the two hundred and ten, the two hundred?
Where is it?
It's, no, it's some new pictures, you know, that she had with, uh, civil rights.
We were gone.
You were gone, you wasn't here.
I'm trying to put it on the consent agenda.
Yeah, yeah, that needs to be put up.
Some mirror pictures, maybe, uh, late, uh.
Civil rights.
Civil rights, uh, leaders.
Yeah.
Murals.
Fifty-seventh campus.
W R R.
Murals. M U R R.
Like they got down.
R A L.
Mm-hmm.
That's through, that's through Alabama, University of Alabama, Kansas.
Like they held down on, on the other end, on the other street.
I all the news this week, I was like, I'm going to.
Okay.
And person, uh.
Is that yours, Ken?
Yes, and also I would like to, uh, I want to ask, uh, Councilman Johnson about, um, this teen junior, uh, football team. Uh, are they part of the, they play at the stadium, don't they?
Yes.
Uh, they was asking, uh, the councils for help. They just about got all of their uniforms. They needed five more uniforms. And they were asking the council to, to support them of getting the other five uniforms. And I wanted to see if, uh, I helped another he gave to. He said he talked to President Bowie too.
What team is it?
It's the Speed Hustle Panther.
Oh, that's the, uh.
Their ages are from nine to ten.
I had, I had those kids play ball.
Yeah, they're, they're from ages nine to ten and they needed, uh, he said he bought up all the uniforms, he needed five more. So, uh, they're forty-five dollars a piece.
Man, he's, he goes gone.
He gone, and he said they come for the council.
But I would say, if you get a chance to watch that team play, that, that boys die like football.
Forty-five dollars?
Yeah, he said forty-five dollars. Uh, he, it's, it's five, he need to get, uh, five more kids. He said he has bought all the rest of the kids and they need to help to get the other five.
That's a city team.
Uh-huh, little, they're little kids, uh-huh, football team.
Mary, does the city not have a line for your form? Why don't you, okay, so why we run, why we, why we run outside the line item? Why we get to them?
I would defer that to our acting assistant.
We have a line.
What downfield, the school purchase, I mean, the recreation purchase uniform. But the team don't want the uniforms. They might get a bell uniform. They won't get a bell uniform, like, okay, Bens, uh, like when I coached baseball in John Stan Potter shop, I didn't like the hats nor socks nor, so I purchased my guys' uniforms.
Because you didn't like them.
Because I didn't like it, correct? I purchased it.
Right.
So the same thing with football. They may not like what the city recreation is, uh, fine, using. So that means they want to get their own helmets, they want to get their own thing. We furnished them for the kids, but the parent, but the coach want to look like Super Block. So that's what the problem is, so they come out, they want to come out looking, they want to come out looking good. And I, and I don't blame them, and somehow I'm just can't afford it, but still, I think it's possible.
I'm, I'm asking.
But I, you know, because I did, you know, but I'm people.
Well, that's why I asked, you know, he asked us. So, uh, I just, he asked me, and he asked President Bowie. So I brought it before the council and, uh, you know, when it comes to the kids and, and the children.
That's, that's, that's enough.
Right. So it's.
Yeah, we got a line item for you.
Okay. Uh, my next item is that I would like for, uh, for each council to look at, uh, with, uh, we do need our Auburn pay plan done. Uh, it, I gave everyone one. Sam, you have one?
No, I have one.
The one you gave up in the past.
Yes. And the reason why I want to address this to you, to us, because it was told to all of us during our budget year that, that the plan had been done. It was told us that the Auburn pay plan had been done. Uh, this Auburn pay plan has been going on since, uh, twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen and up to this point right now that, uh, it has not been done. Uh, they were dealing with, uh, Sean Van Dyker. They were communicating with him. And the reason why I feel like that, uh, if we say we want the workers back and make sure that the workers have their salary, a decent salary, uh, I feel like the Auburn pay plan, if we finish, we start, and it's, it's practically what, four years? And we haven't got the, the pay plan yet. And it cost the city, it was forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and one cent. And, um, the mayor told us that he, he gave us a, a little, a copy of something and said that's what they gave them. But, uh, with Sherri.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, and, um, this is a, a big step for, to make sure that this city has a pay plan done by, uh, we started. So, um, I'm asking the council to, so we can push forward with this because the mayor did not, he told us he had, but he, he doesn't have it. It has never been done. It hasn't even been finished.
Also, people lie too when they talk about a pay plan. A pay plan is just a baron. Just because it's set in stone, you have to look at demographics, you have to look at the revenue stream that they go set. So you also have to take all the factors into it.
But, uh, but you started it in.
I know, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
And then he stand, he stood for us during the budget and saying that it was, it was done. And, and, and come to find out, it, it's not done. He told us it was done and he gave us, gave all of us, you know, he's the mayor, he represents the city day-to-day operation. We all said we want the workers back to work and we all said we want the workers to make more than seven twenty-five. So this body here, uh, if we say we want them back and we want them to make more money. You started it in twenty, twenty sixteen, you took the city money and started paying for it, so why not, let's get this pay plan on?
Councilman Bowlin.
Those, those schedules were received a year and a half or longer ago. They were here when Olive Davidson was here. So I don't know why this is something new you just brought up recently. Those schedules been around for two budget cycles at least. So I don't know why all of a sudden this all becomes a big issue all of a sudden with the mayor's office when we, those things been around, like I said, a long time. There should be three of them. They only presented two to us, but I thought there were three originally, three different phases or levels we could buy into. So again, I think it'd be nice to find out really what information was provided to us and again, were there three schedules?
Can I say something? From you, you reading your minutes, it tells you that, uh, she had provided anything because she hadn't done, she hadn't even completed it.
No, ma'am, what I was saying is the schedule was presented some time ago. I know they were there because I know we're talking to Davidson about them a long time ago. And, uh, and, uh, and so again, why it's two were presented and why the rest of the information, to your point, Ms. Thomas, has not been followed up on, I don't know. Because that's really, at this point, it's kind of like, just cut that thing off, we done with it because we've not seen it, and we probably won't see it while we're here.
Well, best pay.
We've got that much longer. This thing's been going on ever since before we got here.
Well, the best pay plan we can do is look at the people making fourteen thousand dollars a year to twenty-nine, up that side.
Right, right, I, I, that's kind of sensible, I would think, mostly, so.
And President Bowie.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want, uh, my, well, I, I have a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, if we want to, uh, be fair to the workers and making sure that they're getting the wage they need to be paid, why can't we have, uh, I, it's free, why can't we have them to do, Melissa Pallett, to do a, a pay plan?
Okay, that's it, based on demographics.
For the workers, you know, we say we want them, that he's talking about them, they've been working for years, making seven, uh, what, six? They, uh, well, if they've been working for years, say they weren't making much, but he's saying now, he's saying that the workers, uh, some of them make seven, seven what? Seven twenty-five or seven thirty-five minimum wage. And, uh, and they'll, each one of us, the council's saying they want the workers back and then they saying we need to give them a raise. But we, you got to have some in front of you in order to give these people a raise, not because you want to give them a raise and not because the mayor want to sit.
Well, also too, you got to look at the mayor's staff, the.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
You got to take all of it into consideration. Sustainability, what type of administrative one, administrative two. Now, I'm listening to that, that you need to take into consideration.
Okay, well, this, you know.
Okay, that's good, I get it.
I, I, I just want to ask, ask you a question.
Shoot.
Uh, she mentioned Auburn University, uh, on numerous occasions, the mayor keeps saying I bought some football tickets with city money from Auburn University. Can, can you, can you, uh, get with Ms. Wade, maybe we can pull the documentation from the police department who ordered the tickets? I ain't had that doing tickets, but since we talking about Auburn University, you know.
That was a nice way to get it in, right?
Yeah, we talking about Auburn University. But, no, but no, he, he keeps saying on the radio that I, I, I bought football tickets with city money, but it's not true, you know. Why, why would I have to buy a football ticket? I could have gave him ten tickets I had the other week, you know. But anyway, I, I'm, I know, I, I'm out of order, but I'm talking.
And my last one is, uh, with Ms., uh. Do we have to do the, uh, put the motion on the floor tomorrow for the holiday, uh, holiday house invite? She wants to, uh, get the invitation to be going out and it's a part of the public building that she's using?
Wait, what, what are we doing, what are you, what, what are we doing?
Give it for building use?
Uh, yes, she don't, she be, she be saying that the performing, at, at the performing. She gave me, I got, it's on, she just gave.
It's just on the public.
It's on the public building. It's on the public building.
Okay.
It's a part of my, the committee, so this is why I'm asking you if, do, tomorrow, do, do this have to be on the agenda to vote?
I don't know what you're asking for.
All she has here is that she asked, she spoke, she spoke to us about it the last time. She wants to know, uh, could they go ahead on, uh, having their holiday, uh, event at the Performing Island?
Last year, was that nineteen Washington or was it Performing Island?
It was at the Performing Island. I was in, uh, uh, last year, I, I, uh, Councilman Benjamin, how did they get it last year?
If I'm being personally correct.
We just put it on consent and vote.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Are we asking just for the builders or are we asking for the wait, for the vendor fee? Because I know the pass.
Ms. Katie doesn't have one.
Okay, okay.
You, you asked, she asked. She got.
Yeah, go ahead.
Last year, they just like came up before the council and spoke for us. She said that it was an event sponsored by the Oldy Co Museum and Saladella County School Preservation Society. And the Oldy Co Museum is in Arno City. And you said the Preservation Society had given, she decided to y'all the money that we turn back to the city. So y'all said that y'all were the way to pay it out of discretionary work we can do, which we're on charges to have the event down there. So we can have it on.
Okay, what, it's two weeks, I think, right?
And we've got a couple of books at the Performing Island.
What's the date?
December second through fourteenth.
They starting Saturday through the fourteenth?
Yes, sir.
Well, Councilman Bowlin, we can't vote on that, that's, you know, we serve on all.
I'm the president, they'll go, I can't vote on that.
So I can't vote on that neither.
This is for Oldy Co?
It's Coach.
It's Coach.
Yeah, but the receipt, proceeds don't go to Oldy Co?
No.
They just get it on.
Performing?
And the city gets the taxes off of it.
Performing. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, and, uh, the other one is, uh. Okay, and the other one is, President Bowie, you know, we have what is ceramic down the the construction that needs to be finished up with that? We haven't gotten anywhere with that, and we need to finish that. Do we have to go through the insurance company to do another?
Council, she don't follow up on that. Anything else, Councilwoman?
That's all?
Thank you, ma'am.
Look, you can hold it up real quick. Unfiled payroll, can I send that tomorrow? I need some of the people to come here to discuss that, because the little league, unfilled, they want to skip paid, and we need to talk to them this way, but help us with that as well. Also, I'm passed on the situation about the garbage order. And that is, I got a phone call from Miss Barbara Fears, her mom is a hundred and two years old. And right now she paying, God, as you want to look into some kind of, you know, about she being a hundred and two, can the fees for the garbage be waived? Because her mom stayed by herself. She having a lot of, she been written down, she have a lot of people coming in, but she have to pay Ms. Jackson, I'm not sure, I think, Councilwoman Benjamin. But again, I talked to Mr. Dale Purdy and see what they can do on the end as well. But again, I'm turning that over to Councilwoman Benjamin W., you follow with Dale Purdy and bring it back in our policy notice if you could.
She should be, she should be here.
Mrs. Jackson is, Mrs. Jackson is veteran and cannot make it down here with her information. And so this is why he bringing it up. She she has caretakers now. I know y'all remember Ms. Jackson. She used to get around very well.
Up until last year.
Up until last year, up until last year. She cannot do those things, and I just, she she is one hundred and two. I just think, we just need to do this. And she has that one income.
Can I tell you what she has to do? Can I tell y'all what she, she's qualified? This is what she has.
I think this, I think this council is a little rough. Making the management board heads up for anybody, also that back to.
That go a year.
One hundred years. And just pick it up.
That's right.
A hundred years is a long time.
Yeah, we going to put on the.
Also, too, let me give you a rundown for consent. I may not be here tomorrow, because I know we have a sex committee that can start sex.
Oh, enticing some, so what's going on there?
Anyway, I have.
I'm sorry, are we doing Jackson? Are we putting Ms. Jackson on?
Yeah. I'm trying to do a Councilwoman Jackson request for performing arts on second through the fourteenth to approve the Rockford Center, Councilwoman Thomas request. Sports complex, I know the county's renegacy. They are, you go through a.
They're declining.
Yeah. Basically, what they, the softball complex, and that mean, online, you need a service, and I could go back down, because it was a part of a service paid by the county. Also, I see email from the factory about, you know, we voted for that side lock down there.
Right.
They're not going to be able to do it until December or something, they got behind. So can we just move forward, just vote the chair before to December, I put that on the consent. That's about.
Hold on, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
No, I want to put my contract. Do you vote on for my contract for Mr. Jerry Woods?
We vote on him.
Okay, well, I have enough, I have a contract, I got a contract I'm doing out of my oil lease. Mr. Woody is doing it now to fix an area in my ward out of my own money, oil lease. My contracts are ready, baby. I got all my, and insurance, I got everything, all my stuff ready. Uh-uh, he got, he already got it. I just got to pick them up.
Something else coming up, I can't think of it right now. But I'll email y'all tomorrow. I mean, the consent, not saying that I may be here, I may not, but you know, hopefully I'll go in and get the consent.
We just asked Councilwoman, you asked fourteen thousand dollars, absolutely tax.
To divide.
And we just ordered thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
We voted that tonight.
We voted that tonight. So I need just wait to give us a balance as to what that is, so we can.
For which one now?
For the gas.
Come just add it up, thirty-nine thousand, not thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, fourteen, it's over with. So the mayor gave.
Councilwoman Jackson, you can, Councilwoman. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, we voted at the last meeting to approve the fund. And I voted on contract, and she said.
She's not voting on my contract?
And so, those contracts, we do need to come. I voted, I specifically said I voted. Allow. But you license funds.
Yeah, I voted on my contract.
Yeah, I I forgot.
I forgot. Inventory though. If we had the resolution already ready, I'll put that on consent.
And also my contract for me to give my money to to my, out of my salary, President Bowie.
Have you did the resolution?
I talked to him, he told me go see, I supposed to go see him in the morning and bring him a copy of my resident, of the resolution of my, out of my salary towards seven.
Okay, if you can, as far as your documents.
Yeah, I need to.
If you can get it to me, because we're going to be in and out tomorrow, if you give it to me between twelve, two, because we're going to have a working on that time.
Okay, you'll text me so I can write it to you?
We voted to allow this gentleman to tap out the building behind Oldy Pope. A brick got tore down here, so who, what we have to check? Basically, he got to get his license, his insurance.
If I could, Doug Buster from the cemetery preservation group contacted me and said if that building does get torn down, that those bricks are unique, because all you can find right now are bricks that holds them. So in order to restore some of the stuff in the cemeteries, he needs actual authentic solid bricks. So if you're, what's that? I don't know, I I didn't, I didn't.
Because I don't think he worked for the house to give them my license, but he tanned it down.
That's what I was going to say, you know, probably, that's why I would tear it down.
That's what you think, because he ain't charging a lot of things.
Right, he's going to recruit the bricks. So if we do, anybody does see full bricks laying around in the city stuff that we're tearing down, if we can save some of those for them, I think they appreciate it.
Councilwoman?
Do I have to vote for news now? I'm going to, I believe, Wednesday. See, I'll go down to New York for three days. I'm, uh-huh, I'm going to, I believe, Wednesday. No, no. Listen, they pay for my, they're paying for our rooms, but I I'm using my, the stretch there for my gas mileage. I'll be going there for three days representing the city of Seattle.
Can you do per diem travel, please?
That's what I'm saying, I just need the gas, they they pay for our hotel for the three days and stuff. I just need to get per diem's and gas. I just want to, to the record, y'all, say we vote, so I need my money.
All right, Councilwoman Bowlin.
When we met last time, y'all, I talked about the Southern High School parade statement, and we said that we would bring it to this week. And we also said that we would invite, offer some.
He's in Auburn.
Yeah, and I was told he was in Auburn, so. Uh-huh, because he won't ask, I'm going to get him to ask Cory. I'm going to, I'm going to President Bowie asking, and we have a question for, but I thought he could be here in person. But he's in Auburn tonight, but the, so this is what it'll be about, the bill tripled in in some places and doubled in some places for the Southern High School parade. So one year, he's got a treasurer, if I can borrow you just one second. One year for the parade was two hundred and ninety, two hundred and ninety dollars.
Yeah.
And then another year, it was three hundred and something for a Southern High to have a parade. Well, this year, when they got the bill, it was nine hundred dollars.
Tripled.
It tripled, it had tripled, and they were trying to figure out what in the world is going on. And so I brought it here last week for us to go over, then I was, you know, asked to get officer Fitz here to see what the deal was. Because nobody could answer why the bill had tripled from two hundred and ninety dollars to nine hundred dollars for the same parade, a smaller parade with less time and all of those things. And so I don't know if he's going to appear tomorrow or not. Oh, he did all week long?
I think he just reverted back, because I think he thought he's parading around the football.
I don't think he knew, because I asked the treasurer to call him, and he couldn't, invalidly say.
Right, he, he, he got his answer. He he thought that he was going by based on what he figured, configured.
Go back to whatever it was last year.
So it went from, it went from, from being four ninety to three some, to two something.
Whatever it was, I mean, where it was last year.
Uh, one year was two ninety, one year was three ninety. I don't know if that was eighteen, two thousand and eighteen was two ninety.
That's three ninety.
Three ninety.
He need to look and see what it, I can give you what the actual.
Okay, so you let me the actual, yeah, she will give the actual number, but it's two something and three something.
All right. Hey, let me know to me, between twelve and two. All right.